Bree?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I think before we go over to minutes, we need to address the resignations that you abruptly immediately adjourned meeting last time, since we have three members sitting here that resigned and left the table.
Resignations were not particularly effective because the Borough Council said they were not accepted by majority vote or support of the council.
Right, because Mr. Haynes illegally adjourned the meeting.
Resignations are not effective. Now, it's not acceptable resignation other than forty-five days of the intended writing unless it's drawn and running part of the day. So, I see it's only a candidate who's in wait, um, a candidate. They have to be there until resignations are accepted by majority. These four people are still in wait.
And I'm suggesting that we address that issue since we were unable to address it last time because the meeting was illegally adjourned.
The chair will decide how we go forward.
And also with this agenda, no one was given any time to provide any input on what was going to be on the agenda, and none of the stuff that was not taken care of last time was included in the agenda, even though Mr. Haynes himself had declared that we would address the rest of the issues at our special meeting. But the special meeting was called, the agenda was set out, no one was allowed to have any input on the agenda.
I am.
So when is this being taken into consideration as we add those things to the agenda? There's no reason not to add them now. So it's your discretion to deny these being added to the agenda?
From a legal standpoint, any council member can make a motion to a candidate on the floor. If he wants, it has to be seconded by majority.
Well, maybe bizarre. You continually interrupt us, but I guess we're even.
If Borough Council by majority votes.
We know that's not going to happen, so move on. No, there are some inaccuracies. Um, one, there is no, um, recording on here of the fact that I had asked for paper copies of minutes and agendas and was not given one through the last meeting. That was not on there. And I also brought up the fact that council member Rome was trying to deny access, um, through the sanctuary via the handicap access to the church, and that is also not allowed to use. I heard you say that it doesn't matter, it has to be open and accessible for anyone that needs to use it. But that's, that is part of the issue with this whole setup. That is our handicap interest.
The council are not supposed to reflect every little comment that's made by council members or other officials.
Yeah, no, that needs to be on there.
Minutes are to reflect the official actions of Borough Council at a meeting and public comments if they're contained.
But we're allowed to put on here questions we're asking to answer about the legality of the meeting. That was something brought up by Mr. Downton.
If it's felt to be important enough that we put in the minutes.
So it's not important that we don't have use of the handicap access, and Mr. Rome was trying to deny use of the handicap access into our Borough Meeting?
I am not saying that at all. We're totally twisting everybody's words. What I'm saying is not every comment that a council member makes in a meeting goes into the minutes. Free minutes are going to be twenty pages long.
Well, those two things need to be in there.
You can ask that they go further.
Anything else?
I do think that when I said that I, uh, had issue with maybe this meeting, that meeting not being an official meeting because it was never advertised to have the meeting here in December, I think that should have been in the minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as they are.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alvin Haynes, Sugar, yes.
Cardrow, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
Kristen Potter, no.
Jack, no.
Make a motion, carry. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Jack Del and Kristen Potter to put together 2023's Borough Budget.
Well, since we don't have the 2022 council budget that you guys never provided, despite the fact that Mr. Downton had.
You should get a second one in motion before we discuss. There's a second one.
He seconded it. We're meant to.
But you interrupted it. You waited to second. I would second it personally.
I didn't interrupt him. He wasn't speaking when I already started talking.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so there's a second. Now you can have discussion.
Okay. So what's the legal opinion when somebody appoints you and you don't, you haven't been notified, or why?
You don't have to accept.
Okay.
Well, I do not accept.
Just shows another underhanded deal by Mr. Haynes and Keith Payne. And I did send the letter back. You have the email that I sent back, Keith?
With regard to?
That I was not interested in doing the.
I did open it up today, this afternoon. I received it around two. I did not print it out, but I did see. I'm sure you brought a copy so you can read it. Thank you.
Well, in short, it says that I do not want to be involved in the 2023 budget because of all the, more or less, the fact we're dealing with us not knowing all the finances. Finances have been kept in a closed, uh, council or council members, so.
And I agree.
Let the minutes reflect that. There was an email on this issue.
I also do not.
Is that the original, or is that a copy? I can.
I don't have to leave it alone. I did print it out.
I bought a copy.
Can I have a copy of it?
Actually, probably can read it for everybody, so.
Well, I mean, there, there's several, there's several errors in the minutes, but I guess my question is, what is the legal exposure and/or is there an issue with the treasurer not being involved with creating the budget for the Borough?
Well, the Borough Council is the one that needs to make the budget.
Okay.
Obviously, it would be best if you had some input by the treasurer. The treasurer's part of the group, but in this case, you've got an outside treasurer. All the treasurer, by my understanding, you know, we have someone that just pays bills. That's all we have.
So you didn't review the contract you signed with them?
Sure, that's way back then.
Okay, so, so we, we as a council don't understand what the treasurer can or cannot do for us.
Well, it's spelled out in that contract. Whether, whether the treasurer has input or is part of the budget, normally that's a good idea. Normally, it's a good idea. In this case, I don't know what would have any effect, but it certainly included the treasurer's role. Well, I agree. That's what I'm saying. I don't love, Ray, that it could have a whole lot of effect on us. I think the individuals that need to make up this budget are council members. And you were a former secretary treasurer. I think your input probably would be better.
As a council member, I do request that be attached to the official time. That sort of explains why I don't want to be involved in the 2023 budget and that does explain that the Borough officials should do it and that the 22 budget is still a mystery out there.
And I decline to take part in the 2023 budget because, one, we have never been provided with a 2022 budget that council, which we jumped in part of at that time and not mine, should have made up. Instead, you just presented the one that Ray made months later. Also, I have asked for certain documents, namely the one of these mystery clothing costs. So without knowing everywhere our money is going and having all that documentation of where money went and what things were spent on, I'm having no part of it.
I would say in November of 21 to 22 budget, Keith had one copy. I had a question. I never got it out. But it was passed down to earlier work because we're moving on. It should have been all taken. So, uh, I'm sure we noted that the 12 budget and fifty thousand for church was not involved. It was more or less a meeting of like almost two to five of the 21. So who actually had the budget? It got between you and Darrell. Where did the budget disappear?
As a matter of fact, and a matter of course, the council president, you should be the impetus behind putting together a budget in conjunction with the rest of the members and the treasurer. Of course, you assign that to some thing. But you're the one that should be head of the table, working with everyone else to do the budget and having last year's budget in hand for everyone. Now, that's a fact. Is that not true, Mr. Boucher?
Additionally, I think.
I would generally concur about the.
Generality about it. Ray wants to speak.
Ray, you can finish, Mr. Boucher.
I like that couple.
I was just going to say that the 2022 budget was not in the record that transferred to me from the public stairwell at Jay Fisher. And I have photographs and a witness to support that. I asked multiple times as secretary treasurer and as assistant secretary to be provided with a copy of the budget that was not in the files.
Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
No, I refuse.
Jack, no.
We had a, there's no follow agreement?
I'd like to see a copy of the church contracts to know what maintenance that we are responsible for. Okay, so I don't see, get to see a copy of the maintenance agreement, is what you're telling me? You just took it from me?
Can you guys share? I need, I need five copies.
Go ahead, read.
And I would like a copy of the church contract to know what maintenance we are responsible for. Because no one's seen this mystery church contract that we closed on.
This is the first time we have contracted, signed contract?
Who was on previous move?
Was that contract we signed last, the other day? That was just.
So if you don't have the church contracts, it's.
I have them.
So it says that you will pay at $20 per ton for the praxwoods, right?
For the entrance.
So is it, you are paid $20 or up to $20?
For what?
Are you paying 20? Did you mean to pay $20 per ton or up to $20?
It's twenty davis per ton on a triaxal load.
Okay.
There can be built pressure.
Uh, crystal water can be built through the Borough.
Wrong.
Yes.
This is, uh, you got here this agreement to battle through 2025 unless either party opts out. So you're trying to do a long-term counter?
It's a long-term contract. Any party cannot delve after this year if you per se subject to it. They want to do something else. They have, yeah, they enter this year. They want to change the whole party. Do they? You want to continue?
Does that stand out for the church property? Can that come out of the general fund?
No. Already made that one. They don't think it's good. No.
Because I think last year they did.
Okay, I mean, uh, it would be built separately and come out of the general fund.
That should come out of the general fund.
I realize that. That's why I questioned. Because last year they didn't do it.
I'm just saying, it should come out of the general fund.
I thought it should have broke the. Uh, you have anything on liability insurance?
I will try and get that one.
Make a motion, make that's printed on the contract. Copy of this. liability insurance. And then that's done. And the solicitor suggested we have the Borough covered on it.
I think you just need the Borough's.
I'll second the motion. Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
I have a question about your plowing. Who does this church's parking lot? Who plows it? Chris Miller. Well, then you need to state to this gentleman that he is not to plow my church in and leave that huge ridge. My son comes down and clears this out so that I can have access to my church. That's just wrong.
Okay.
Please do address that. That's wrong.
Okay.
Well, I received two invoices from Mr. Boucher, one with regard to Batesville versus Sturrocka in the amount of $1,625, and the other for Strick Borough General, $480.
Why? I don't remember. I'm trying to think. What is your fee for attending a Borough meeting?
Will you stand up for your motion? And that by the Borough.
So even though you've not completed the attendance at this meeting, you billed us for on December 15th? Yeah, but you billed us yesterday when it had occurred.
I knew I was going.
What if you didn't?
Then you're also wrong.
We'll pre-bill people.
Don?
Donald Haynes, Sugar, yes.
Cardrow, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
Kristen Potter, no.
Jack, no.
And I make a motion to Great Preston Township, $500 for power incendiums to break down the wall. Stefano Gobbi, Schrillinger, Paddleman, 21 winter season.
Do we have invoice, man?
No.
So.
So that was in Washington, if you have Preston Township, $500 for the 2022-23 winter season?
No, 2021-22 season, life's year.
And we don't have an invoice for that?
No, it's verbatim. That's signed contract for sending it.
For maintenance?
Yes.
For last year's winter maintenance. Donald, make a motion to Great Preston Township, $500 for the 2021-22 winter season.
So who do you speak to there that tells you they won't send an invoice?
Um, Adam Jones. He's not there, is he? Yes, he's still there.
Don?
Michael, yes. Donald Haynes, Sugar, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
Kristen Potter, no. That's not an invoice.
Jack, no. Same thing. Without an invoice, huh? Preston does an excellent job for us.
I'll also make a motion to the higher president for while considered for the 2022-23 season.
I'll second that motion.
Stefano Gobbi.
Would that motion include, uh, have a written bill and a copy of the insurance?
No.
Correct. Is there a amount?
Quite many, yeah.
Okay, Donald, you second that?
I second.
Donald Haynes, Sugar, yes.
Cardrow, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Darrell O'Haynes, yes.
Kristen Potter, no.
Jack, no.
Okay, uh, you have data that Batesville lost in 2023.
Things happened since the last meeting. We had a hearing on a preliminary injunction filed by the plaintiff against Sturrocka to essentially stop the sale from going through. I'm sure some of the people that are here attended that hearing. Greg Woods testified. He did a nice job and testified honestly and openly. And John Martin testified on behalf of the Borough Council regarding what transpired with respect to the transaction. Uh, it was a fairly lengthy hearing. They played videos. They did a bunch of things. We have not got a decision on that yet. Still waiting for a decision from the judge. Uh, in addition to that, uh, that same day, later in the day, I filed a motion to dismiss the entire lawsuit based on the fact that the plaintiff had not defended the plaintiff in twenty days. Heard the judge's last order on further objections. That motion is, all of that request is pending before the judge now. They don't have a decision on that yet. So, um, we could get a decision tomorrow. We could get a decision in the week. That's all I say. Judge Muir is generally pretty proud of his decisions. And, uh, he knows township law very well. It's Borough law. It's regional law. It's both sides. Um, it's in his hands. We'll get a decision on that later. But those two things happened since the last.
I had talked to Shelley Hope today about how we can with the patients. We have to handle the resignation at a time to act here and then go down. And the way it would be for a resignation is any acquaintance or no acquaintance, that way you can relax and fill your seats. That would be the way.
And who does she speak to?
Shelley Hope on Borough Association.
I don't disagree with that procedure. Probably is a good way to do it. One part of it, how they do it with the, the first resignation that dealt with the general basis of Yale's resignation, that's better than that. And you've got the appointment later on the building, and the resignations here to.
It's never had to be voted on.
No, and Yale's position has never been filled. If council wishes to fill Yale's position, and they do, and though beyond the period of time that normally would happen, I think they can still do it because that's what the judge will vote against. But it's important to designate who, like, to rebuild the position approved, just keep that in mind. But I think the first thing in mind you want to do is the resignations.
No, that's what Shelley, I was going to.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Why, uh, why we?
That is a wrong one. I'm making a motion to accept.
Okay, where, where we send?
I'll make a motion to accept her vote's resignation effective 12/21/22 at 9:00.
You're second on that?
I'll second.
Ray has a question.
So I guess my question is, if he's not resigning until the 21st, and they has a motion to accept his resignation on the 21st at nine p.m. during the session there, um, we can't, the council then can't appoint someone to fill that seat until.
No, 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 no.
Ron said we can appoint somebody.
That, you know, what?
Okay.
That's what, that's really what you should do.
But we're gonna vote against that. For them to.
Keith, yes. Donald Haynes, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes. I'd like to make a motion, appoint Gail Redden.
Gail Redden.
I'd like to make a resolution.
Motion and resolution, yes.
To appoint Gail Redden as of December 21st, 9:00 PM.
Gail Rohn, 1.
And to.
9:00 PM. Should be 9:01.
Yes.
9:01, 9:01, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So I'd make a motion and resolution to appoint Gail Redden as of 12/21/22 at 9:01 PM.
I'll second that. Don.
Donald Haynes Jr., yes.
Yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Donald Haynes Jr. Resigned from Strucka Borough Council effective at 9:00 PM, 12/21/22.
I'll make a motion to accept Donald Haynes Jr.'s resignation effective December 21st. So I'll second, 9:00 PM. And Don, then you take a vote, you should. Okay. You second it? Yes. Okay, Don.
Are you saying?
Yes.
Keith, yes.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
I didn't see if there are any other interesting.
Yes.
I'm personally asking us to make a motion to appoint somebody.
You got Ted Bezos?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ted Bezos effective, uh, no, I'd like to make a resolution.
Make motion.
Motion, resolution, to appoint Theodore Bezos for the, fill the seat, uh, December 21st, 2022.
You want to specify the seat?
Yeah, I should do that. It would be taking Donald Haynes Jr.'s seat.
And then, I'm just, Keith, I know you're trying real fast, but the one that Gail knows, she's replacing then Cook. Correct, that's the way she, okay, so now.
Somebody have the, have an issue me including the words, uh, in Kurt Rohn's section for the motion to appoint Gail? Can I add? Okay, Kurt Rohn's seat. Do we need to specify that Kurt Rohn's seat was Mary Ann Devault's seat? Or do we need to specify that?
No, because that's already taken care of.
Jack made a motion, resolution to appoint, uh. So Jack made a motion and resolution to appoint Theodore Bezos to Don, Donald Haynes Jr.'s seat as of 12/21/22 at 9:01 PM. Is that correct? I'll second that motion. Don.
Donald Haynes Jr., yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
I Keith Payne officially reside as councilman, road committee member, and assistant secretary. My resignation will take effect on Wednesday, December 21st, 2022 at 9:00 PM.
That was redined.
Councilman, road committee member, and assistant secretary. So I make a motion to accept Keith Payne's resignation.
Keith, about the stuff I have the rights to know that's still out there, you can take care of this stuff.
That would be included in the records I turned over on this house. Those will be turned over in the records. Don.
Donald Haynes Jr., yes. Donald Haynes, yes.
Keith Payne, stains.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Yeah, Keith Payne. You got any? Got any other?
Sir, anybody else?
Don't be back there.
Hi, Jared A. Allen, reside at 316 Strucka Creek Road in Strucka, Pennsylvania. I am a registered voter and would like to fulfill the vacant seat of council.
I'll make a motion. Motion, resolution.
Do you mind, uh, who's gonna take ownership of this motion?
Okay, hold it.
Oh, hold it.
Okay. So it's gonna be Kurt's motion?
Yes. Kurt makes motion. And resolution. Two. Sure.
Point, point.
Point, yeah.
Jared A. Allen.
Yes.
Which, which seat?
Be Keith's. That's why we got Keith, that's his seat. As of.
9:01.
9:01 PM.
So Kurt makes a motion and resolution to appoint Jared A. Allen to the council seat held by Keith Payne as of 12/21/22 at 9:01 PM.
I'll second that motion. Can I get that? I should stay out of it. Anybody else wants that?
Well, I do.
Yeah, you'll have. I'll let her. Okay.
Donald Haynes Jr., yes.
Yes.
Keith abstains.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
Okay, I'm submitting my resignation for the following, president of Strucka Borough Council, position of council member, and overseeing any and all of the work. If above resignation will be effective as of December 21st, 2022 at 9:00 PM.
I'll make a motion.
You say council and president?
Okay. And.
No, is that what you're claiming, or just overseeing the property?
Yeah, everything.
Anything involving those.
What a joke.
The council will have to follow up with Katie over there.
I have a second on that.
Don.
Donald Haynes Jr., yes.
Keith, yes.
Donald Haynes, yes.
Faint.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
Do you have anybody else interested in the council seat?
Anybody else? You better.
There you go. I don't think three people from one family should ever be on the council.
You're more than both, there's two receipts.
Oh, I have a resume. Strucka Borough Council members, my name is Raymond Woods II, and I'm currently, and I'm currently and have been a resident of Strucka Borough since 2014. I'm requesting to be considered by you for any open positions on the Strucka Borough Council from the date of this letter forward. The date of the letter was December 13th. With nearly 30 years of corporate experience running teams of employees and budgets on large, high-profile projects, I believe this kind of experience and skills will benefit both the Borough Council and in turn the greater community. I appreciate your prompt attention to this matter and thank you in advance. Sincerely, Raymond Woods II.
Your resume, they would be up table, this. I make a motion to appoint Ray Woods.
And councilor.
And, pardon? Yeah, and resolution. Motion, resolution. Hand, council seat, Donald Haynes. Actually, it's me. Why not? Gail Redden's seat. Why, you got pictures of all of these taking her out?
So now you have one empty seat?
I'll second your suggestion.
What does it go up for, Alexa? For all the next year?
She's avoid you.
Yeah.
What does it go off for, Alexa?
Keith Payne, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Jack, yes.
Right, next year, we'll do it.
Next year.
Anyone else? An empty sheet, go on.
I'll do it till November. That's it, I'm not gonna rerun something. When I write that, Alexa is up for a seat in November.
I wonder if you're letting go. Well, that's the only way you can in the U.S.
Right, I'll tell you every time that I. Like I said, I don't think that three people from the same family should be on the council. Yeah, nobody else, I'll do this, Tom.
I mean, we don't want it.
Well, we have. They'll not open the house again.
Yeah, we don't have a position.
It's more, you can decide if you want to build it or not. Or the council can decide to build it or not, especially before they are in position, we have every reservation of a couple of weeks.
That's important, that's what, don't worry about dates. They did.
Or they, they want, they said, you want his council tax, it's one of his conditions. You know, I will build up the. But if you want to build it right now, you won't, things not gonna come and build. They can have, they can build it, they have enough to set it up for us now. It's a new business, home, maybe, except, that's good.
Steve.
What's that?
What do you want to do?
No.
Okay.
I think you'll have another one in a future meeting, okay?
And there are some other people that are interested.
Uh, I have a question about this agreement we have with whatever bank to do with the bills. So, since they're in charge of paying the Borough employees, who's in charge of doing the W2? Okay, so do they have the information from prior agreement here? Or let's say, the tax collector, to know what the W2 should set? Let's see, it's.
Well, how do you handle the bank, though? It's the same move forward.
If you're required by law to have the W2, that's what you need to do. It's been a long tradition of Debbie not doing that, being under the government.
So, second motion to see your, uh, bills. Did you back?
Uh, what's the second motion?
I make the motions after I make the bills. I, uh, sent him a copy of the motions to pay the bills as well as copies of the invoices.
And you're paying the bills before the minutes were accepted, just because they're voted, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's been proceeded for years.
And then he just takes everything off the bill?
Correct.
No one else has to sign it, just the bank, right?
Just the bank, yes.
So you send them the invoices, is what you just said?
I copy of the invoices.
So then when I asked you about the invoices for the closing costs, and you said you never had an invoice?
Correct, the invoices that I have in my possession, I forward to him, yes.
So if you pass on them, what is the invoice, just motion?
The invoices in question are related to the church sale, and we did discuss that, I believe, at the last meeting.
And, and the attorney, uh, sent that invoice, your settlement, uh, statement to the bank. Cause she was handling the closing.
That was another thing, uh, with her, I had a call to her about a week ago, and she turned nothing back. Like, it'd be nice to know if she's the assistant secretary, and how it's handled. Excuse me, listener. And then to find out, like, you know, what her contract is, and, you know, how we're paying her, and, cause we haven't got no bills back on the, the church, correct?
No, uh.
Let's see your resume.
Someplace, someplace. It was just settled in a statement of $1,900 to $700. $600 was for herpes, uh, $700 was title search. I can give you a copy of that.
That was the. Out. Title first, print out.
Yes.
The 1,900 was the invoice I questioned at the last meeting, and was told there was no invoice. Yeah. Now, I'll say you can get an invoice?
Not an invoice, he said he had a settlement statement, that's not a new.
Oh, statement.
It's a settlement statement.
They made the background search? Did I get it?
They did do a background search? Yes.
Through the courts?
Yes. If I, if Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard did the title search, my understanding is he issued title insurance?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
My understanding is there's a title search.
How far did they go back?
I don't know, Mr. Howard had that answer, and maybe the Assistant's listener had that answer. Maybe you wanna hear another, I know a lot of times she's in court, I don't know when you called, but a lot of times she's in court. Maybe try again, Jack, I'm sure, I'm sure she will.
Do we have a copy of the finalized church sale contract? Has anyone seen that, other than you? No.
I don't have, I, I presume maybe the Assistant's listener.
I always believe that Assistant's listener just had that.
Would you not have decided as president of the council?
Contract, yes, one time we get, I know, anything, copy of.
So the borough has no copy of the signed documents for the ownership of this Christian building that we're holding our business in.
Well, it's in the history of this institution.
Who represents the borough?
Who represents the church? Help me copy.
Mr. Martin.
Exactly.
And he, he testified at that hearing.
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn. Yeah, right. For religion. I got, uh, I asked for this to be put on the agenda for the last meeting, and it wasn't, and it never got addressed.
Public interaction period? Say, public interaction.
I answered public comment, yes, yeah.
There you go.
You said, you said, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, you did not say.
Yeah.
I said, I made a public comment.
Oh, you're so put about it, you.
I did not hear that.
He thought I did.
Apologies.
Okay, so, I do have some questions.
Okay.
All right, so, two months back, there was a discussion about back taxes. I know that you got us authorized a payment of $16.50, but there was also, I think, $1,700. Jack, do you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah, do we know what happened to that?
It was actually sent to me.
Do we know what happened to that $1,700?
It was my understanding from talking to the gentleman that, um, once they got current unemployment tax, that you could send a order, and they would, um, excuse that penalty. That's what I was pretty gentleman to say.
Okay, great. Uh.
Answer.
Pardon? Nothing to follow up with them, or send a letter back?
Uh, he stated that time just to send in, uh, the amount for your question for $16.50.
Jared, oh, that's essentially.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Um, okay, and I have a question for Assistant Secretary Payne. At previous meetings, you stated that you have not accessed any of the files in the storage locker or the email addresses of the borough. Correct. And you still, as of, not done that.
Correct.
So any files that you present to the new secretary would just be the stuff that you kept in your personal.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, I do have one question while we're on that, with regard to the minute book.
Yes.
Did we do, did we receive the minute book?
Yeah, I held it up at a meeting. They are in the closet.
And I need a key to access.
Sorry, I was.
You got a key.
I got a key to the records room.
Correct.
I didn't get a key to.
I never got a key to the door.
The door, yes.
I'm discussing the key to the door, not the records room.
There's always, there's always somebody there, if you can't get in, just knock on the door and I'll get in, or somebody.
Okay. But that day, you moved. Yeah. Access that, that day.
Right, you have to have.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm sure, but I see what you're just saying, there are guys.
If you know. Got the mail. How do you know this stuff?
Keep a second. Yes. Finish your motion, I'm gonna get me. There's no, there's no. Just to mention.
Well, there's public comment.
You wanted to make a motion, you began the agenda, amend the agenda. To, uh, then again, we have a discussion, do we have to amend it?
If you gotta amend the agenda, you're gonna take it with the business.
Okay, we'll do that, this is more of a data. Uh, what about the 2021, 22, 23 tax? That's a bit tough now. I mean, the 2021, 22, this is all about the Lord did in taxes, so is there any record at all from DCED, any paperwork from DCED addressing it back to the council?
Yeah, do you think it's taxes?
Excuse me, not taxes, uh, okay. The 2021, 22, 23 tax change is one of the seven. Okay, so back in 2020, they did not change the tax by ordinance.
Are you talking about the?
Yes.
And they, they. Oral goes on the.
Right.
How you assesses the, the, says that, or applies the millage to be says that.
Right, so they changed the millage around, we doubled the fire tax, took, uh, some away from the general. But it was never done by ordinance. So with this coming forward, we're gonna need some legal opinion. Uh, what happened to that?
I mean, I may have to check. Of course. Probably have to call.
Okay, we've got that. And then, uh, part of the law, you done contacted, see what was going on with the bill that's outstanding?
So.
Did you send out an email or a telephone call?
Send.
Sent a letter?
I.
Could you give me a copy of that one?
Sure.
And then this status, I meant the agenda too, this status, the audit status from 2018, 20, that's when they, the Lord.
Well, that's something about I have been hanging on for a long time, I never really understood what was going on with it. And service, you're the force of the year, I don't know where we are, but if there's an update, the audit that needs to be done, request.
So you haven't received anything back from DCED?
I got nothing from these. I talked to these.
So what about you guys, have you got anything back from DCED? Ah? Yep. They don't owe a point on the Struckah Borough. Cause we're trying to lower, but you have an honor. Okay. You know that happened.
You guys know what's going on.
Jim Rhodes, when he was there.
Trying to contact Keith Payne.
Jim Rhodes stated that he knew the, I think it was the 20, the 19 and 20, uh, did not accept it.
What happened to you? I didn't get back.
You guys didn't.
You guys told me not to do anything with him.
Well, I told Jim Rhodes myself to follow up on it, and he never returned my calls, I told him several times. And I think, Jack, you can confirm, you tried calling, you can call me back either.
Yeah, he just sent me an email today and said that they'd like to come in and help us.
Well, good.
So you may get some help in that.
They changed it in one of your agendas.
Yeah.
Accepting his program.
Yep.
That's why.
Well, you got a new set of council members now, and you can look at this with fresh eyes, you can make whatever decision you want to make.
Unsolved mysteries.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you so much, my name is Bree, I've been visiting this town for a lot of years, I'm a big fan, I don't understand all of what you're talking about, but I wanna try to follow something I thought I heard tonight. So I understand, Mr. President, either you or perhaps Mr. Boujé, you are the resident subject matter experts, so, like, what is the right way for either council members or members of the public to get their eyes on a copy of the church contract? Who's responsible or even allowed to get it and from whom?
Freedom of information act, that's right.
That's right, but so, like, I heard, I thought I heard you say the assistant solicitor wrote it, the one who has it, right?
Yeah, but it's, yeah, but even under freedom of information, if the borough can access records, even if they don't have them actually in their possession, they have an obligation to get those records.
Who has the obligation, the borough has the obligation?
Borough has the obligation, but you said, to me, what has to go to the borough? The problem, I think, has been, is we have no freedom, we have no right to know.
Like. They don't, like, in a turn, it was a transaction, and another person at this table was involved in the transaction also, like.
Well, I would say, in fact, Darlene Keith, they signed a contract, they should be aware of a contract, you guys should get something back to council, I would say.
Okay.
Look, I told you, assistant solicitor.
I think those documents should surface and will surface very shortly, shortly meaning in the next couple of weeks.
It's only been here.
Does it, but like, does there need to be a right-to-know officer in place in order for the surfacing to happen, cause otherwise, no one will, like, put them on the table?
That's usually the secretary does the right to know.
One thing I didn't know.
And then you.
I know what, Peter. Let's, let's, let's.
There are, there are remedies, there are remedies under the right-to-know law, if you're not getting those. I'm not gonna just get into all of that now, but there are remedies, if you don't get a response on a timely basis, you can follow those remedies and hopefully get relief. Okay, but what I'm saying is, those, those records, whatever they are, should be available for public inspection with the right, right-to-know request.
They should be here though.
The right request won't make them available.
It needs to make them available, yes.
Then? Any other thing is, how should I address it, I brought up the last meeting, I amended the, the, so, that was to do with, that's my last two years of payment, and we've got the issue that the payment's going out to council and mayor now. So, if they did not do, change the tax by ordinance, where does Struckah Borough sit right now?
What was that?
If they didn't do a change in taxes by ordinance. So now they're, they've been paying money off, I didn't cash those checks, because I don't feel that Struckah Borough has done it properly, so I didn't cash my checks for the last two years.
Did anybody file a legal challenge to the borough not doing it by ordinance? Was there any kind of challenge in court?
Not in court, but I did.
Well, I should.
I did challenge them, that council meeting brought it out.
Okay. It's something I'll have to, to research specifically, cause it sounds like it's a bit of a mess, but, I mean, if you got to pay checks.
I brought this up several times, I might throw up the last two years.
I mean, if you declined to accept those checks, in which case you wouldn't get paid, but if you're, you're saying, I would like to get cash money, Jack, it's free of my, in cash, that's a good request.
That's my request.
Okay, now whether the council wants to get it up tonight or defer it to the next council, that's up to you. But I think some, some background's gonna have to be looked into as to the legalities or the issues of the millage change for those years.
Correct.
Ask Dar. The chairman. Without warning.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh, sorry. Donald Ainge Jr., yes. Keith, yes. Darlene, yes.
Jack, yes.